Yeah.
Good evening. Welcome, everybody. It's nice to see you. I'm so glad that we could meet again this week. It is Thursday, April 2nd, 2020, and I'm going to make a motion that we return to public session. Rory, may I ask you to second the motion?
Second the motion.
Thank you. All in favor? Say aye, please.
Aye.
Thank you. Seven zero, terrific. And in just a moment, as is our custom, I'm going to suggest that we all please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you all please join me? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic of which stands one nation under God. Indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all.
You. We appreciate that. We ordinarily would take a minute to update one another and our community on board subcommittees. But my understanding is that we probably don't have much in the way of update from our subcommittees. I think we're all just happy that we could meet as a full board tonight. And appreciate that everyone is here. And thank you so much to Kim for facilitating our meeting via Zoom. It's great to see our administrative team. And I think mostly we would just like to begin this week, as we did last week, by saying, thank you so very much for the extraordinary work that continues to occur, I'll say, across the district and in every household to ensure that our students continue to have access to meaningful educational opportunities and resources, even from a distance. I know that even just since last week, we've continued to receive some new guidance from the state and we'll have a chance to revisit our budget conversation a little bit later on in tonight's meeting. And we're also really looking forward to hearing an update with regard to some of the professional learning that has been happening to support our staff in providing instruction and learning opportunities in these most challenging times. So thank you for all of that. I don't know whether board members might have announcements this evening. Perhaps we can just take a quick minute if somebody has an announcement. Julie, I'll start with you. Rory. Liz. Terrence. Scott or Bill. Did I get everybody? Okay. Then if not, I'm going to suggest that we invite Andrew to provide some announcements and perhaps some updates since last week. Thank you, Andrew.
Sure. Thanks, Marjorie. And thanks, everybody. Thank you was probably the biggest announcement, again, to everybody here, to the community, to our staff, to our students. These continue to be unprecedented times, as we know. I find them to be times of perspective-taking also. And in that sense, some good comes of this as we take perspective on the role of school in our lives and the role of work and everything and the role of family. And we're all spending a lot more time with our families. So it's definitely a time of thinking about the role of all these different institutions in our lives. And I really appreciate all the feedback. This is this last week or so has been a big week of feedback for us, which we so appreciate, both through emails that we've received, but also, and maybe Mary will touch on this a little bit later. She's been running sessions with different groups of students at the different levels. Last time we spoke, I think we had just done a session with the parent council. Now we have sessions with students at each level. So that continues to be really helpful in terms of helping us know how the work that we're providing is being received at home. Because otherwise, we don't necessarily know. So the feedback is incredibly helpful. This week, in terms of, you mentioned guidance, we do, we do continue to get updates on a pretty regular basis. Sometimes it feels like guidance. Sometimes it feels like people trying to figure out what to do tomorrow, which is understandable in the current environment. So most recently, as everyone's well aware, we got guidance. We actually got an executive order that continues the state of emergency that we're operating under and that keeps school going through, I believe it goes through midnight on April 14th or the 15th. There's a little bit discussion about that. But in any event, school is continuing and continuing through what otherwise would have been the spring break. And we've had, we've had feedback on that executive order from the community. Even even before we announced our intentions to the community about next week, it was being reported on in the newspapers. And so we were getting questions from some of our community members. And as with everything else in these days, every perspective is a little bit different on what people think should happen, what they'd like to see happen, what feels right for them. So we have heard from community members who are concerned about not having a break next week and concerned whether that's because of the workload they've been experiencing till now, or concerned about their religious observances that come towards the end of next week. So in our thinking about how to approach next week, we are trying to be mindful of everything. Certainly respectful of the governor's order that learning should continue. So there will be learning opportunities for all of our students at every level throughout next week. But also wanting to be mindful of both the need for families to make religious observance, but also the need for families and our colleagues to take a break. The break that they were expecting to have next week. So it's, we hope that we've struck a balance. Between yesterday and today, our building principals have sent messages out to their school communities with more information about what will be happening next week. There will be learning available each day next week. I think if I could say anything to the community, I'd go back to what I said about perspective a few minutes ago. The learning is there and available as an opportunity for our students to take advantage of. If families decide that there are other priorities next week, that's absolutely their prerogative and we will be understanding of that, as I think we should all be in. I'd like to say we'll be understanding throughout the rest of the school year and for as long as we're in the current circumstances. So but certainly next week we will be, and I hope that our families will understand that. And if they need clarification on anything, they should reach out to us. We'll continue to be available throughout the week to answer any questions that should come up. So I think that's my update for tonight.
Thank you. We really appreciate that. And I think really your remarks are a very nice segue to what we're hoping to learn more about this evening. And if there aren't any comments or questions from board members, then I think we're ready to just continue with the agenda and turn our attention to the discussion of professional learning.
Great. Thank you. So I'm going to say just a little bit, and then I'm going to turn over to Mary. And I think Mary is going to share a screen with us that we can all look at in just a moment.
Thank you.
But what I would just say briefly is that in some ways, teaching and learning is more public currently than than maybe we've ever experienced it before for individual families. Although they know their experience, but they don't necessarily know the experience that other families are happening, having, which is important to know. So in some ways, it's more public. But what we're going to talk about tonight, I think, is work that's not public at all. But there's been a tremendous amount of work behind the scenes in the last few weeks. And I've, we've, we've all been very impressed by our teachers' commitments to getting up to speed on lots of things that they've never been, they've never had to be up to speed on before, because they've always had their students physically in front of them in the past. So there isn't one way of doing this business of remote learning or distance learning. There's lots of ways. And we've been sharing lots of different tools with our teachers. They've been learning a lot about those. And Mary will speak to some of those now and then speak to also where we're heading in the next couple of weeks. Thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. So good evening. I'm going to share my screen. I just have a few slides to frame the conversation this evening. Share. We'll go to slideshow. Okay. So before I begin, I'd just like to mention, Andrew mentioned earlier, the student focus groups that we've been running this week, which have really been terrific. So we started last Friday with a high school group. And then this week, we've had a middle school group and then just today, an elementary group. And so we frame the conversations around what they felt was going well in terms of learning at home, this distance learning model, what's been challenging or problematic. And then we asked them for some suggestions, what they might like to see, if we were to make any changes. And then also, we asked them for their questions, because we know this is a time of great uncertainty. And we know that's hard on our students. It's hard on us, quite honestly. So we tried to answer the questions as best we could. Chris Nelson was able to join for each one of those. Also, the principals, there was a elementary, middle school and high school building administrator there as well. So it was really nice to have those conversations and our students were wonderful. They gave us lots of helpful feedback and lots of things that, you know, we had been hearing from some of the families who have shared with us already, some things that our teachers have been saying. And some things, you know, I asked today our elementary students, so what's going really well? And I heard about how much fun it is to learn with your puppy or your kitten by your side. So those are things we weren't thinking about, but some of the hidden benefits of learning at home right now. So just to give you a summary of what's been happening. So as you know, we were planning around this meeting, I think last week's meeting, we were planning a broader presentation on professional learning, which we hope to bring to you at some point. And, you know, those are kind of the bigger themes of professional learning and the structures within our district. But through all of this, we really think about the learning commitment and keeping the learning commitment alive for our adult learners, as well as our younger learners. So that's kind of the spirit in which we bring this to you. We started, as you know, with a full day of professional learning on Friday, March 13th. And that day, we really thought we might be back in school that following Monday. But we knew that it would behoove us to have a day of professional learning to make sure that our teachers felt comfortable with the distance learning tools that we have. And also to give them some time to plan and collaborate around what they might do in a distance learning environment. So they started the day with a self-assessment. And we really wanted to make sure these three communication tools that are most widely used. So eChalk, which I believe the whole district a few years ago, three or four years ago, had some training on. And teachers at the upper levels tend to use this more than elementary and middle school teachers. Middle school is kind of a mix. And teachers use it to varying degrees. Then in recent years, we've been doing more with Microsoft Teams, especially last year and this year. So as you know, we're a Microsoft district and we have the Microsoft Office Suite. So Teams is one of the applications that allows for things like chats, threaded discussions. There are note-taking strategies, assignments. There's also video conferencing and audio conferencing that can be done through Teams. So it's a really nice way to communicate with others. I know our admin team, we've been using that quite a bit for meetings throughout the weeks. And then there's CSO, which has been used most heavily at elementary school. So CSO is, I'd say it looks a little bit like Facebook, where teachers post assignments. And then those are broadcast out to the students and parents. And then the students can then post their work. So they may take a picture of something that they're working on, or they may write their post, or they may take a short video. But it's been very well received as a communication tool, and many of our elementary teachers are using that. But we felt that, you know, everyone should feel comfortable with at least one of these. So the focus of the learning that day was on these three things, as well as some others. And then there were small group and one-to-one support sessions offered by our staff developers throughout the day, and then a chunk of time for grade levels and departments to plan collaboratively and prepare for the distance learning environment. But at the end of that day, we wanted to be prepared, but we didn't know that we weren't going to be back that following Monday. Sorry. So the following week, we had two days of preparation, work with staff developers and lots of collaborative planning. There was a lot of learning on the fly and what's needed. So this was kind of a triage approach at that point. There was also some support available throughout the region. So our local BOCs, Putnam, Northern Westchester BOCs, they've been doing something they call PL on the go. So our teachers can sign up for that. Our colleagues in Chappaqua facilitated a day of professional learning on one of those days. And some of our staff developers actually offered sessions, but they were really the facilitators of this regional professional learning, which was really nice. But by the second week, we wanted to have more structure. So starting that week, we had a schedule where each staff developer at the same time every day offers a daily session on a distance learning tool. And then they also have, they use an app called Calendly. So people can set up appointments with our staff developers when they're not offering sessions. So they can have either one-on-one or small group. Most people have been using Zoom or Teams to communicate for those sessions. And those are a combination of distance learning tools and pedagogy. I'd say, you know, during the first, the second week here, we were very heavily into the tools, making sure everyone felt comfortable. And people were really starting to think about how does this apply to the students in my classes? And we were able to coach them through that. And then there were additional sessions offered by colleagues and different consultants. So Chris Nelson, Paul Anello, they've been offering some tech sessions as well. The regional collaboration that I mentioned, one of our consultants who we work with for a variety of things, but especially with our innovators, Diane Cunningham, she hosted a session just this Tuesday afternoon on online lesson design, providing a very simple structure for that. And that was attended by, I believe it was 47 people. We also had a session today that Pearson gave on navigating their realize online system. We know that a lot of parents and students and teachers, in fact, had been struggling with the online resources. So they were able to help us with that and point us to some parent resources that we'll post on our website, that hopefully will be helpful to all. And then even some check-ins with administrators to make sure administrators are up to date on what's happening with each grade level or department. So and those administrators providing some guidance as well. So it's been a varied approach, but just to give you a sense of what our teachers see. So this is a PDF that went out at the beginning of the week. Actually, I believe it went out last Friday for this week. And all of the things, this is just a picture of it, so you can't click here. But there are Zoom links for all of these sessions. So when teachers are wanting to sign up for one of these things, they actually don't have to do it in advance. They just click on the Zoom link at the given time. And then they're able to participate. They're 30 to 45-minute sessions typically. And they've been very well attended. So over the course of each week, over 200 registrations in each one. And also at the top, you'll see here, their names are actually links. So there, you can sign up there for some office hours. Those are those one-to-one or small group sessions that our teachers can participate in. And then we have a shared folder. Our lab aids have been terrific, and they have been helping us to populate a shared folder with lots and lots of resources for our teachers. Just tutorials and directions and videos of some of the professional development offerings that have occurred so far. So it's really been a team effort and it's been terrific. So everybody's worked really hard to make it happen. And it's been, you know, although it's been very challenging, it's just been a really wonderful learning environment to be a part of. So moving forward, now that we're moving into a time of new instruction. So, you know, as I stated earlier, when we started, we thought this might be something that was very short-term. We wanted to make sure that our students maintained their learning, kept up with their skills, participated in some practice. But clearly now we have to move to more new instruction. Many of our teachers have been providing new instruction, but I think it's more formal now that we, you know, feel this is long-term, even as long as it's been. So the focus will shift now from training on the distance learning tools and the technology to really the pedagogy. So as our teachers become more and more comfortable with the tools, now we can think about, well, what does it look like to teach a reading workshop online? What does a good online math lesson look like? How long can students actually stay engaged with the direct instruction? What do they do in between? How often do you come back together? You know, what's live? What's asynchronous? So, you know, really interesting questions to think about. It's really pushed us forward in terms of the conversation around technology integration. But I think now we're, we're moving into learning even more deeply about what we can do with this distance learning model. And again, going back to the learning commitment, you know, we still want to honor the values and beliefs of that commitment. So keeping that alive while our students are learning at home. So we still want to think about active learners, students being intellectually engaged. And we also want to think about social emotional wellness as we do this. So we know that the relationships with the teachers, with their classmates, those connections, those are a really important part of learning. We know that learning is really a social construct. And, you know, it's really important to keep that in mind as part of the learning process. So those are our thoughts as we move forward into this next phase of distance learning. Stop sharing the screen.
Thank you so much, Mary. I realize it's somewhat cliche to say a picture is worth a thousand words, but I really just appreciate, I know we all do, the opportunity to glance at the calendar of professional learning, just to visualize, as Andrew mentioned a few minutes ago, what's been happening behind the scenes. And to think that our staff in such a short period of time has been provided with so many opportunities for professional learning on tools and strategies that perhaps were not the tools and strategies we thought that you would be focusing on in this period of time. And to think that, you know, we really started in earnest on that Friday, March 13th, and have in such an organized manner rolled out professional learning to our staff. You know, it's really just a tremendous testament to your team. And we really thank you for putting together this overview for us and for the community. It's really helpful to see what's happening and also really validating to hear you speak a little bit about the importance of relationships and even to think about learning as a social construct and that if we're well-positioned and facile with our tools and our technology and our infrastructure, then we're in the position now to shift the conversation and shift the focus and think about some of these other questions that help us stay faithful to our learning commitment and the experience that we want for all of our students. So that was, you know, I think tremendously helpful. I, of course, want to pause. I'm not sure whether board members have comments or questions. And if it's okay, guys, I'm going to just go in alphabetical order, because I don't have my thumbnails very well organized today on my Zoom. So Rory, are you waiting to make a comment or ask a question?
No, waiting is a strong word, but maybe you will make a quick comment. I really appreciate, Mary, what you've done. And I think it is remarkable, as Marjorie said, that we've been able to stand up such wonderful professional learning for our teachers in such a short amount of time. I also was particularly taken, in fact, I took a screenshot of the virtual professional development sessions sort of calendar that you laid out. It really hit home to me that there might be an opportunity to use such a, such a tool to support our students in the weeks ahead, you know, if this moves on. And maybe that brings me to my question, which is, you know, we sort of said, well, we weren't sure how long this was going to last. And then we did make a decision, okay, we need to implement some professional development here. Is the assumption now that this will last for a protracted period? And therefore, I assume that we're now beginning to take steps to do similar, to add similar tools to support our students. Is that, is that fair to say?
Yeah, I think our hope is that it doesn't last, but we're prepared for it to last. And so it's really interesting, because, you know, some of these tools were tools that we were thinking about and starting to use. And some teachers were experimenting with and using more than others. And but now the urgency around using tools to communicate with families and with students has, you know, really increased dramatically. So I think we have to be prepared to teach the rest of the year this way and hope that it's not. We're hoping we can be together live in the not-too-distant future. But I think that we have to make that assumption for the moment and proceed that way. What's interesting to me is, you know, when we do return to school, whenever that is, things won't be the same, because we've all been, become so accustomed to these tools. You know, so it's really interesting to think about how that's already changed the learning environment. So it will be very interesting, but I think we're, from now on, we're just prepared to take this long-term.
My kids are already worried about snow days. They're like, does this mean we're gonna have snow days? So no, it's great. It's a silver lining for sure. It's a great opportunity. Thank you, Mary, and everybody. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Terrence, how about you?
Sure. So I want to echo some of the sentiments that were already put out there, but I think it's worth reiterating that our teachers only have three days to prepare before we went fully online. And if you think about that, that is a tiny piece of time to do an enormous amount of work. And I think another thing I'd like to just kind of put out there, based on some of my personal and professional experiences, that there's a big difference between converting your class to an online platform versus creating an online course. And I feel like that's an important thing to kind of keep in mind, because, you know, I feel like we as a district are in the process of, we're kind of in the middle, right? Because if we're saying that we may need to continue this format for the foreseeable future, that means we're really creating online courses. But again, that takes a lot of time. So you know, even in our own professional lives, you know, we're making these huge adjustments. I was on a video conference today and the presenter had to state several times, you know, I can't read the room. So, you know, please give me a signal or let me know or do something to give me some feedback, because she's not there. She's not in front of all 10, 20, or 30 of us. And so just think about that for a second, as professionals, as parents, as adults, that the adjustments that we're making and then transpose that experience to what our teachers are going through. You know, I work for a major research university, and I can tell you that the work that I've seen from some of our faculty in higher education, it pales in comparison to the work that our teachers are doing in the district in terms of how they're converting, how they are trying to maintain that engagement and to still deliver a high-quality experience for our students. So I can't say enough about what I have personally seen with my own children as well. The teachers are there, they're engaged, they're available by phone, they're available by email, they're having, you know, Zoom and other types of video meetings. Our administrators are doing a great job of also maintaining a kind of face-to-face presence as much as possible. So I would just encourage all of us as both district administrators, trustees, as parents, as community members, be patient and understand that no one has ever done this before. And so we're working our way through it. And I would say, you know, our district has done a truly remarkable job and that anyone who has questions, comments, or concerns should continue, like Marjorie said, to use those traditional methods of feedback, working with the teachers directly and trying to just maintain that engagement, that relationship, and utilize your building administrators as needed. But, you know, given all of the madness that's occurring right now, I think our district is doing a superb job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terrence. Thank you, Terrence. Liz, did you have a comment or a question?
Here I am. Um, I, I just wanted to say, you know, echo what Terrence was saying, but also, um, I think one of the things that the students are learning, you know, whether it's meant to or not, is how important it is to be able to adapt and to be resilient and to solve, you know, be a problem solver. And so there's all kinds of other lessons that are coming in with this that, um, I think are just, you know, part of the whole package, but very useful, instructive in life.
Thank you. Julia, how about you?
I, I don't have anything new to add, but I just feel I would be remiss to say, to not say, just really thank you so much. And I hope that maybe people will have an opportunity to watch this, um, meeting and see what Mary outlined in terms of, you know, the level of preparation we're trying to provide our teachers and understand, you know, it's invisible to us how much goes into it. And I, I just, it's really, um, it's great. And I would love for as many people as possible to see and understand the, the process that this, uh, that everyone is undertaking to make this work. And, um, I think overall the community has been, you know, equally engaged in trying to be successful in this new format. So I certainly appreciate, you know, everyone's efforts, both families and teachers and administrators to really try to get through this in the best way possible. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Scott, how about you?
Uh, just a, just a, a quick comment. And, uh, um, in terms of on the, the professional learning, I, I completely agree with the comments that were said in terms of seeing the outline or the, the calendar of what we provided was, was really, I mean, just the visual of it was, was very impressive and really, uh, great to see. And just wanted to highlight, which I, I, I think everyone knows, but just both from, talk a little bit about my personal experience with my own child and then also with, with me, with me at work, um, in terms of the importance of, I know that, um, we talked about synchronous versus asynchronous, um, that there are, it's not just about the, um, benefits of learning, but it's also the social emotional as well. And I'll tell you, I learned it myself. Uh, I wasn't expecting it. I've got a team of, of 10 plus people scattered around, um, that were no longer in the office. And just the idea of having a meeting time for people to get together, even if the teachers aren't doing it for learning purposes, I think there are tremendous benefits, um, for the students just to see each other and to interact. And, uh, and, and I'll, I'll tie that in with, with, with my own family. In terms of my daughter had her first Zoom class this afternoon and it wasn't an educational class, it was the opportunity for the kids to get together. And, um, I, I think the benefits of that are, are, are really tremendous. So in terms of, for the professional learning, for the teachers, I, I did emphasize that it's not just all about, um, the education. Uh, it, it's in, in terms of bringing, um, bringing the students together with the teachers that I think is, is so important. I, I was heartened to, to see that firsthand, um, today. And I'm hopeful that that's, uh, that's going to be continuing in the, in the weeks ahead, or unfortunately continuing. Obviously it would be much better for everyone to be back in school, but.
Bill, how about you?
So I like to echo the kudos, of course, very well done. Uh, it's very hard to learn things mid, mid-year, mid-cycle and do it on such a short notice. Uh, at the end, when you were talking about coming up with lessons and things that work, things that don't work, it made me think, are there best practices out there? There are people who teach remotely and have taught remotely for a long time. That's just the way they teach or for whatever reason. There, there, there's some best practices in terms of for different grade levels or different subjects, what type of lessons work, what type of lessons don't work.
Yeah, I mentioned, uh, Diane Cunningham's session, um, that she hosted this week. So she and some of her colleagues really did develop some expertise. They facilitated for the last 10 years. It's called OC 21 through BOSI's, the online courses for the 21st century. Um, they've learned lots of lessons through that. You know, one of the things she shared was keep it simple. And sometimes, you know, in our quest to make sure that students have everything, it's, it complicates things and, you know, it makes it harder for them on the receiving end. So, you know, things like that, the engagement, like how often you engage with students, whether it's live or whether it's through some written responses, but just that personal feedback, you know, things like that. So she, there are some best practices out there. What's interesting to me is most of the best practices are focused on either higher ed or older students. Um, and so it's interesting to think about what this looks like with a kindergarten student. You know, um, but they are engaged. One of our staff developers was sharing with me today, she has a three-year-old at home and her preschool teacher was online teaching the preschool class. And she said, and they had Zoom, and she said, oh, all of yous, you know, please mute your microphones and then when I call your name, you're going to unmute. And they were all on their iPads and they hit, you know, the unmute button. And then they knew at three years old, which is amazing to me. I never would have anticipated that. So it's just, I think it's a whole new world, but there are some best practices we can learn from, but I think we'll develop new ones as well.
Especially in those lower groups, I think it's, I just, I started to think how you run a second grade remotely. Uh, it must be difficult, but at least we know that those kindergarteners won't have any trouble signing onto a Zoom meeting in 25 years.
Thank you, Bill. One of the things that, um, I really like to picture as a result of you having shared this calendar of professional learning with us, Mary, is that our staff members have opportunities to see one another and, um, to sort of be in the room, so to speak, with one another. And, um, I guess just maybe this circles back to something that Scott was, um, mentioning earlier. Um, I, I think that is one of the aspects of the student experience as time goes on that, you know, is as important to keep in mind, just looking for opportunities for the students to be in the room together as, as often as possible and to be able to share out with one another, um, and feel as if they're still part of the learning communities that we've worked so hard to create in all of our classrooms and school buildings. And when I think about that, I also think about the role that each of you play in the day-to-day lives of so many of our students. You know, they've gotten used to seeing your faces also in the halls and the classrooms. And so it's great to picture the focus groups that you've already, um, initiated. But I wonder if you could also speak a little bit to either future plans to continue to talk with students about their learning experience or even other ideas that you might have as a team for how, going forward. Because again, you know, we're still in the early days and really in sort of emergency preparedness planning, but, um, ways that you also will be involved with our students, with our teachers, you know, sort of directly in their learning experiences as you have grown accustomed to being involved in the past. Um, is that something that you're talking about yet?
Yes, um, we actually, the, uh, high school group we met with last Friday has already requested another meeting.
Great.
We scheduled that. So, and I think keeping that communication loop going is really important. We also hosted on Monday night, um, Catherine Grabash and Allison Porcelli and Chris Nelson, Paulinello and I, um, a session for parents. So it wasn't just about feedback, but it was, um, about two of the tools, um, Seesaw and Microsoft Teams. And so we were hearing that there were parents who were, you know, wondering about how to navigate those tools and maybe need a little support, had some questions. So we ran it, um, just as this meeting is being run in a webinar using Zoom. And we had, I think at one point, 118 people, maybe a few more. So it, it really drives home the importance of having these kinds of forums where parents and students can share their thinking. Um, we're also serving teachers on a regular basis, you know, has the professional development going? What else do you need to make sure that we're meeting their needs? So I think it's this ongoing loop of, you know, keeping in close communication and then revising your plans, making some new plans, um, and seeing what's next. So although we wish the reason we're different, there is some excitement around all of this learning and, and all of the new tools that we have at our fingertips. So, um, we're hopeful that we can bring that back to the classroom when we're physically together.
Thank you. Terrific. We really appreciate this opportunity to talk with you about the professional learning behind the scenes. Thank you so much. Um, if we don't have other comments or questions regarding this agenda item, I'll just mention, because we do have a few members of the community with us, that after our next presentation, we will gladly pause for some, um, public forum, public commentary if members of the community wish to, um, use the Q and A functionality within Zoom, uh, as long as they aren't, uh, comments or questions that are submitted anonymously. We just request that you please let us know who you are so that we can attribute the question or comment to you and follow up with you. Um, perhaps outside of this meeting, if appropriate, um, we'll be turning our attention to public forum in just a few minutes. Um, so with that said, I think we're ready to move on now. We're on agenda item 10.02. And this is really a chance for us to pick up where we left off last week, um, when, as the board's aware and perhaps the community as well, we had anticipated adopting the proposed budget, but for a variety of reasons, made the decision to pause, um, largely with respect to, um, new information and even new timelines, um, that we anticipated would come from the governor. And, um, to a certain extent, we have new information, um, now. Um, so I think I'll invite Andrew perhaps to begin and, um, provide an update regarding what's new since we last met on this topic. Thank you.
There's, there's, thanks, Marjorie. There's some that's new, uh, there's still a lot more unknowns than there are knowns. So the decision not to adopt, uh, certainly seems like a good decision. And, uh, to continue delaying adopting until we know a significant amount more seems like the prudent approach to continue taking. Uh, this week, we did hear the announcement that board elections are postponed from the May date across the state into the beginning of June. And the assumption is that that also means the budget votes are delayed. Uh, but I think to be safe, we'll leave it that, that we're all assuming that's to be the case. We, and, and we're fairly certain that that's the case. We haven't heard the official word that that is the case also, but we anticipate that it is. And as a result, we anticipate that some of the deadlines that we would typically face for the May vote will probably be pushed back a little bit, uh, for the June date, uh, if that's the way things are going to go. Uh, just, just yesterday, the state did release the aid runs, the, for the preliminary aid runs, uh, which gives us some information. And there were, uh, some changes, uh, from the earlier runs because the earlier runs, based on the governor's projection, were based on the governor's proposal around state aid, that the expense-driven aids would be rolled into the foundation aid, which was a new approach this year. But, uh, and so that's the initial proposals that we got, uh, indicated, uh, state aid based on that new calculation. But in the runs that came through yesterday, this is now after, after the fact that the governor's proposal in that respect was rejected. Uh, and so, uh, state aid is now separated out again. Uh, things like BOSI's expense-driven aid separated out from foundation aid. And as a result of that, some of the dollar amounts now change a little bit from what they were. And there's still an awful lot of unknown in terms of even aid for the remainder of this year when it comes to things like, uh, interest earnings that we receive and county sales tax that we typically receive. Although we don't get an enormous amount in those categories, we do get some. Uh, and we anticipate that those numbers will go down. We don't know the exact amount they'll go down by and the same thing for next year. So for now, we continue to assess those numbers, uh, and, you know, expect to be able to come back to the board, uh, at a later date, uh, with more information. But for now, the decision to hold off seems like the best decision. And it, and it's consistent, I believe, with what all of our neighboring districts are doing at this time.
Great. Thank you so much for that update. Um, and just to further clarify with respect to timeline, because last week when we talked about the budget, I think we were, um, anticipating that perhaps we would meet this evening and then come back to meet again on Tuesday, April 21st, which is our next scheduled meeting. And that perhaps at that time, we would be in a position to, um, adopt the proposed budget. It sounds to me as if in light of, um, in particular, in light of the executive order postponing elections until, and the budget vote, we assume until June 1st, um, that perhaps we will be looking at an even more protracted timeline, in which case we will meet again on April 21st and perhaps continue this conversation. But more likely, we would be looking at a possible budget adoption in May. Um, does that sound about right?
Yeah, the one, the one thing I would say, I, I think we should, uh, remember that that April 21st date is primarily there for the BOSI's budget adoption, uh, or to vote on the BOSI's budget. And that's unlikely to be happening on that date. So, you know, we might, we might want to reflect on that date. And as we move forward and learn a bit more, decide whether it makes sense to meet that night or to actually reschedule a meeting for a different night, depending on what we learn in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, that's a great point. Thank you. So with that update, um, perhaps we should pause if board members have questions or comments. And, um, Rory, I'll start with you. Are you waiting to ask a question or make a comment?
Well, just, just a quick question. Is, is it too early at this point to anticipate whether we would have a revised budget proposal? Or do we think we'll stick with what's already been proposed? I'm assuming it's too early.
We, I think, I think we do think it's a little bit too early. We think, we think there's the likelihood of some revisions, um, on the, particularly on the revenue side of the budget. But at this point, without knowing more about how significant those revisions will need to be, it's hard to say on the expenditure side of the budget, what changes we might need to make.
And then if we do, so a follow-up, so if we, if we do have a revised proposal, do we then need some meeting time to review the revisions, to review the revisions? Um, and, and so maybe even though the BOSI's budget adoption meeting may not be necessary, we might want to keep some time on the calendar to review any revised proposal.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Thank you, Rory. Terrence, how about you?
No questions. Thanks.
Thank you. Liz?
I just, I don't have any questions. It all sounds very reasonable.
Okay, thank you. Julia?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Great. Scott, how about you?
No, no questions.
And Bill?
No questions.
Okay, great. Um, thank you, Andrew, for the update. We appreciate it. And, um, I guess we'll stay tuned for how things continue to evolve next week. Um, I think that does bring us to public forum. And at the moment, it doesn't look like anybody has submitted a question or comment. So perhaps we don't have public forum this evening, in which case we can turn our attention to the consent agenda. Um, I'll glance at the Q and A one more time before we wrap up, just in case somebody is waiting to ask a question and didn't realize that they could enter one into the Q and A in Zoom functionality. Um, and if not, if someone can unmute their microphone, um, Scott, perhaps I'll ask you if you'd like to move the consent agenda.
I move the consent agenda?
Thank you. Julia, would you like to second the consent agenda?
Sure, second it.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions about the consent agenda or any items for discussion tonight? If not, then we can vote. And I'll just ask that when we vote, if everybody can just please say aye. And I think we're ready to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any dissension? Great, thank you. All in favor? Um, and this brings us to an opportunity for board dialogue and discussion. Did anybody have other topics or, um, questions for tonight's meeting?
I just did want to, um, make sure that we acknowledge that Aiden is on the meeting. He's just not in as a panelist, so just thank you to Aiden. I know, I don't think he can participate audibly in the way that he's in the meeting. But thank you, Aiden, for being here and I hope that things are going well for you and your family.
Thank you, Julia. Yeah, hello, Aiden. And, um, we're sorry that we can't see or hear you right now, but thank you for joining us this evening. Um, okay, if there aren't any other topics, um, for tonight, then I think we're ready to just look ahead to future meetings. And as was mentioned, the Board of Education is next scheduled. And as was mentioned, the Board of Education is next scheduled to meet on Tuesday. At the moment, April 21st, 7:30 PM. And I think our meeting next after that will be in early May. I believe it's May 7th. And that brings us to our opportunity to adjourn. Liz, would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. Terrence, would you like to second the motion?
Second.
Thank you so much. All in favor? Please say aye. And I think that's everybody. So thank you so very much. Continue to be safe and healthy and wishing all of you and your families a good week next week. And thank you. We'll, we'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Take care. Thank you.